Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here for today's policy session of the Phoenix City Council for May 8th, 2018. We do have a quorum present so we can move forward with today's meeting. I'll now turn to the members of the Phoenix City Council to see if they have any information and/or follow-up requests they'd like to give to our city manager or the public. Would any member of the council like to give information or follow-up requests? Councilman Stark, please.
Just one thing, Mayor. I wanted to thank the chief and all of her staff for the wonderful Phoenix Neighborhood Patrol appreciation event this past Saturday. It was a hoot seeing all of you serving food to all of our neighborhoods that are involved in the Phoenix Neighborhood Patrol. It was a great event. I think a lot of money was raised. The vice mayor was there as well, and we put in for raffle tickets, and I don't think either one of us won anything, did we? Darn it. But it was great. Thanks again, and thanks chief and her staff.
Thank you very much. Other members of the council? Councilman Pastore, please.
I would like an update on the Sheraton Hotel. So, my understanding is that there have been several extensions on the Sheraton Hotel, and one of my concerns is that every extension we give, the value of the hotel goes up, but we're gonna sell it for a lower price. So, I just want to update on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the council? Vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to congratulate the chief. It was nice to see all those chiefs over there clearing tables, carrying dirty dishes, serving food. You did remarkably well, and all of the volunteers that were there. It was very impressive what they, the hours they spent, the money they've saved, and their really participation, and their eagerness to continue on. It was quite remarkable. Also want to thank the park staff for opening the doors last week, providing services in the community centers to students who didn't have a place to go, or parents who didn't know where to place their kids. You did an excellent job, and I just really want to thank you for stepping up to the plate. You did a great job. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so very much. Other members? Councilman, please.
Mayor, I also want to thank the city parks and rec for opening up the rec centers and facilities for our use. So, thank you so much for doing that. And also, all the brave teachers and students and school staff for going out on the streets and supporting our students and making sure that we have the best quality education we can for the state of Arizona. I also like to thank everyone that helped out in the bike rodeo in District 7 last Friday. It turned out to be a great success. It was actually at the Arts Academy at Estrella Mountain. It turned out great, so thank you once again. I want to thank all those individuals from the Grand Avenue Membership Association and all the artists along Grand Avenue. We have a Hawk Light right there on 11th Avenue and Grand. Thank you so much for all your support, pushing that through, and now we have a safe way to cross the street before all those First Fridays that we have and all the students crossing the street to go to school. Also, I'd like to let everybody know that the Phoenix Police Department is introducing their Phoenix Police Youth Experience. It's for children from 7th or 8th graders. It's a free program, and come on down and experience what it would be like to be an officer and have that experience. And if you need more information, they can go to my Facebook for more details. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Mayor, I forgot one other thing. I forgot the Star Spangled Celebration we have on Memorial Day for all the fallen police officers and firefighters. The banners should be going up down Baseline Road in Washington pretty soon, and billboards, just letting people know that we need to appreciate all those police officers that have given the, and firefighters that have given the ultimate sacrifices, their lives, right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman?
We got to welcome seeds for autism to District 8, which is on 7th Street just south of the river. If anyone needs a gift perhaps for Mother's Day, they have great gifts produced as part of a vocational training program for adults with autism, and it's everything from jewelry to wood turning. So, would definitely check them out. Not that everyone in this room is in need of any last-minute shopping. I'm sure you're all done for Mother's Day. This weekend, we also got to join with several city departments led by Neighborhood Services in honoring Mary Moore, one of our wonderful neighborhood leaders. The Parks Department and Parks Board had named a playground at Pierce Park for her, and that was really meaningful for her family, and we were just able to celebrate all she did for everything from our Head Start to our Police Department. And thank you to all the city employees and partners who participated in that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments by members of the city council? All right, let's move forward with today's meeting. Is there a call for an executive session?
Mayor, in accordance with the properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the city council pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute Section 38-431.02.A, meet in the executive session on Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018, at 1:00 PM in the East Conference Room, 12th floor of Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Mr. City Manager, are there any reports or budget updates?
Mayor, we have item number three on the agenda, so I'll defer to that time.
All right. We have a very short agenda, obviously, very important items, though. The first one is the legislative update. Obviously, the state legislative session ended late one night last week, and so we want to get the good news and bad news, whatever the accurate information is, from the important information, relevant information to the city of Phoenix in the last legislative session. So, Karen, I don't know if this is you, our deputy city manager, Frank McCune, our government relations director, but whichever one of our professionals is gonna take the lead, floor is yours.
I will simply introduce Government Relations Director Frank McCune to give us the wrap-up and introduce his team.
How'd we do?
Mayor and council, we did, on par, well. And before we start, and John Wayne will go through the play-by-plays of the last items of the agenda for the session. Session lasted 117 days, and we do want to thank, from the Office of Government Relations, everyone within the city who helps support our entire legislative agenda, particularly those in legal who go through every bill with us, read them, help us understand their impact to the city, and all the liaisons to all the departments who literally help us build the case for every single bill. Our office couldn't do it without the structure of the city. The help you guys, as the council provided, in telling your citizens about bills that mattered, and getting them active, and taking action on your own, really helped us with the legislative agenda in a big way this year. And to the citizens of Phoenix who engaged from our outreach to them this year, they supported the legislative agenda in a big way and had huge impact on bills like Home-Based Business and the Sober Living Bill in a way that helped us, helped the city in a big way. So, now, Mayor and council, I'll have John Wayne Gonzalez cover the wrap-up.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So, yes, the state budget came out last week. It was about 10, it's a $10.4 billion package. A lot of the issues in the budget that relate to the city have been noted, whereas the state shared revenue formula was not impacted, so that was preserved. Also, there are items that were, that the mayor and council authorized as part of our agenda in December that were money-related, and we were successful in all of those money-related items that the council supported in December, and that's officer, police officer training funding. Actually, the request was initially made for $250,000. We wound up receiving $800,000. Arizona Counterterrorism Information Center, that ACTIC, as known as ACTIC, was fully funded. Internet Crimes Against Children Fund, which the city played a major, a big role in helping this, this revenue source be created a few years back, that fully funded. And also, the Arizona Commission for the Arts, fully funded to a tune of $2 million. So, those were all items that you had requested us to work on in December, and so we were successful in those areas. In the final days of session, which ended May 4th at 12:26 AM, there were a couple of efforts in the final 12 to 24 hours that were some pushes at the end, and you're familiar with those, but to remind, to remind you again, the Digital Goods Bill, House Bill 2479, the staff interpreted that we would lose anywhere from $5 to $10 million to our general fund in the first year, and it would climb thereafter. We were able to, with the help of the League of Cities and Towns, with the help of other cities and towns and stakeholders, we were able to help make sure that bill was not passed. And then finally, there was another push in the final hours on Home-Based Business Bill, Senate Bill 1387, which was the fourth version of this bill at the legislature. And as Frank has mentioned, with the help of a lot of Phoenix residents that were emailing, were calling, were meeting with members, and even night of, the legislature, they were down there backing the cities up to help make sure this legislation did not go through. And so, we had coalitions from Tempe, from Tucson, of course, Phoenix, even some sprinkle, sprinkling of coalitions in rural Arizona, like Cavasue City. So, the residents really, really helped make sure this bill died. And so, those were two items right there. And then, of course, in other bills of interest, we just want to also let you, remind you, the mayor and council, that, again, as part of the legislative agenda in December, there were some policy measures that the mayor and council asked us to pursue, and just some successes of that agenda, in addition to the funding items, Sober Living Bill, that was, that was passed, signed by the governor. And then, House Bill 2304, which was the Title 34, construction manager at risk reforms that we needed. There were some deadlines coming up that if we not extended them, a lot of the projects that were, that our Public Works Department and Transit Department's working on would have been halted. We got those extended, and that's been signed by the governor. So, we were very successful in those areas. At the end of the day, when we did a tally of the bills that the city opposed that were harmful to the city, 80% of those bills were defeated at the legislature, either in committee or on the floor of the, one of the chambers. And with that, that is the report I have. I'm willing to take any questions.
All right. So, that is the report from the last legislative session. Any questions or comments from members of our council? Please, Vice mayor.
I just want to thank you. I felt this year that we had a lot of communication. I appreciated the fact you'd come in and say, round up the troops, this is, the bill's coming, so we could send out email blasts and let everybody know what was happening down there. Your commitment is absolutely outstanding, and I just want to thank all of you for all your hard work, all the hours that I know you've put in, and also to all the citizens and the others who cooperated with us. You did well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments from members of the council? Councilwoman Alzuelo, please. Councilman Pastore?
I just want to say it was, watching from afar and then being part of it at a certain point, I just wanted to say that we worked really hard to make sure some bad bills did not get passed, and really looking at the fact that we worked across aisle, we worked with many communities, and I just want to thank our neighborhoods for rising to the occasion on some of the bills that were needed to, or they needed to be heard from those neighborhoods. And so, I think you did a great job in moving, I would call it, a fast and furious session. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman?
Thank you. This feels good, right? You're getting thank-yous from the council, but you really did well, the entire team. You, you protected local control, you protected city of Phoenix, and, and I agree with Councilwoman Pastore. It takes a lot. You have to work with everyone there, on both sides of the aisle. You have to bring other cities to the table. We have to make an effort to see it, you know, see it through the lens of what other cities are trying to accomplish as well. At the end of the day, we all want local control. You have 91 cities and towns, and I think, for the most part, everyone, I think everyone does. I sit on the league, so I know that. Everyone may have a different understanding of what that means, but you do a very good job of just keeping us in a, in a very good light there, and, and so, all of you did a great job. Clark, great job. And John Wayne, you've been, you're the, you're the senior member of the team, so you've been doing this for, for a long time, and we're very fortunate to have you. And Frank, who, I think this is, now, this is your second session, and you're doing a great job, Frank. I mean, it's all about, at the end of the day, it's, it's also about relationships and how you treat people, and, and so, it's, it's good for Phoenix, and Karen, you, you did a good job pulling together this team here.
Thank you very much. Additional comments or questions for the, our legislative team? Please, councilman.
I just have one question. I just wanted some background on HB 2604, and how that came about. I was reflecting on some meetings, well, actually, two meetings, watching the video, and there was a comment on the dais saying that staff drafted the language and staff was advocating for HB 2604. So, could you explain to me what HB 2604 does?
Were you able to find the bill? Please, okay, go ahead.
So, House Bill 2604 was the consolidated election bill that the speaker introduced, and this is a bill that the city opposed. We opposed, along with the League of Cities and Towns and other cities. There were some amendments that were added to the bill throughout the process, and I believe that there was some feedback shared with some of the, giving information to the speaker as to what, you know, what angles would, would happen, and X, Y, and Z, and expenditure limitation, and some other items. I can tell you that, from, at least from a standpoint, from the League of Cities and Towns and probably even our own Law Department, that, as a reminder to the mayor and council, we're a charter city, so there's a belief that if the bill were to pass, regardless of whatever language, that it has, it has a good chance of failing in court with the right legal challenge. We understand that the city of Tucson right now is looking at potentially taking that to court. So, while the bill was, did receive amendments that may seem to be city-friendly or what have you, the overall issue itself may be a question of law when it comes to, you know, what, what does charter govern versus what state law governs when it comes to elections?
Mayor, members of the council, if I could, if I could simply add, the staff, when the council opposes a bill, staff often will engage with members to explain the basis of our opposition and work through issues. And to Councilwoman Pastore's point, that is exactly what staff was engaged in this year, to work through the issues as they arose, to explain the basis of our position.
One other, one other important thing on this is, while the city was opposed to the bill, the council was actively debating the consolidated elections under the city's charter, and one of the things that we can't address through our charter is the expenditure limitation item. So, given that the council was moving to seriously consider and ultimately has adopted a consolidated election for the city, we had to ensure that the state had some protection for us under the expenditure limitation. And so, staff did work to make sure that language in that bill would allow us, would give us protection for the expenditure limitation, which is a complicated thing that we have to do every four years. So, that particularly was important, given the council's, I guess, parallel action to the state law on consolidating elections through our charter.
So, there is language, I don't have it right in front of me, but there is language in the bill. I can't remember the exact number, that it extends terms, and it extends, I think it's 18 months that of extension of terms, and I guess my question to that was, who was advocating for that? Because we were opposed. There had to be some, was that just added into the speaker's bill, or how was that? I just need clarity.
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, that is the speaker's bill. That is the speaker's language. I know for a fact staff had nothing to do with that. But to go back to what I was saying originally, assuming that the bill survives, if the bill does not survive a court challenge, then all that language is moot when it comes to extending terms in the overall bill. While the expenditure limitation language would still exist in state law because it's, it was carved out, the rest of that bill would be struck. So, all those items dealing with the term, terms and of that, go out the window if the court decides the bill's legal.
And another, another technical piece of that that we worked with, particularly Councilman Waring, on was a severability piece, because that, again, that expenditure limitation thing is really important. When we consolidate, as the council's referred to the ballot, if the voters approve it, consolidating the elections takes us out of cycle with the state, that election is out of cycle with our expenditure limitation. So, we would have, we would have possibly had a one-year gap between our voter approval and the consolidated election. So, having language in that bill that protected us and gave us the ability not to be penalized by the state if the city chose to consolidate its elections was critically important to us being able to have a budget in 2020, 2021 that would protect, protect the organization, protect the city services.
Okay, well, you guys did a great job this, this session, so thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Any additional questions about that bill or any other particular bill this session? Go relax. For like, one day, and then right back to work. All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number two. Item number two is a great item. This is an item, we'll get, this city council will receive a report from an outstanding Parks Department and Community Parks Partnership, Daring Adventures. The vice mayor asked that this great program be put on today's agenda so that not only this council, but then the public can become more aware of the awesome Daring Adventures program. So, Mr. City Manager, I don't know if it's gonna be Deanna Janovich, Deputy City Manager, introduce the item, and I guess you'll kick it over to Inger Erickson, our Parks and Rec Director.
Thank you, Mayor Stanton, members of the council. It's my pleasure today to introduce the Daring Adventures team to you and let them present about this important partnership that we have with Daring Adventures. As you may remember, the Daring Adventures program originally began as the River of Dreams program, and was initiated in 1993 by the city of Phoenix Parks and Recreation Department. However, over the years and budget reductions, many programs were reduced, and this was one of them. But the nonprofit stepped up, and they stepped in, and they continued to provide these opportunities for us in the city of Phoenix. So, we've come full circle now, and we've entered into an agreement with the Daring Adventures nonprofit to return to their home base at Telephone Pioneer Park. Cynthia Brown and her team are gonna work closely with Jerry Kettlehut, who's the executive director, and Nancy Engstrom to further enhance the partnership at its home base in the park. And so, Nancy Engstrom, who's a member of not only the, the Daring Adventures Board, but she's also a participant, will tell you a little bit more about the program, the history, and the direction of the program for now.
Good to see you. Let me make sure the mic is on so we can hear you.
Thank you, Director Harrison, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. It's a pleasure today to talk to you about Daring Adventures and give you an update on what's been happening. Again, my name is Nancy Engstrom. I'm a member of the Board of Directors, as well as I've been a participant for the last 14 years with Daring Adventures. This has been a wonderful journey that we've had with the city of Phoenix. It grew out of 1991 with the Adaptive Recreation Division, and it was headquartered at Telephone Pioneer Park. In 2008, when the park was shuttered, the board, along with an MOU with the city of Phoenix and volunteers, we continued offering adaptive outdoor recreation for people with disabilities. And for those who don't know, Telephone Pioneer Park is located in District 1, north of Bell, west of 19th Avenue on Morningside Drive. It's actually a point of pride place for city of Phoenix because it was the first barrier-free park to ever be built in the United States, and we are just thrilled that we are gonna be headquartered back at Telephone Pioneer Park. I just wanted to re-review quickly just a few of our core programs that we offer to the community. One of my favorites is kayaking. That was the first one that I tried after my tragedy, tragic accident, and it just is the freedom of being out on the water is just exhilarating. We also offer hiking to many of the city parks, and this is a picture of one of our young participants, Anthony Castle, a man with Duchenne's muscular dystrophy, and just last month, with the help of city firefighters and others and mountain rescue, he was able to summit Camelback Mountain. Another favorite outing is cycling, and this is done out of our hub, our cycling hub at Rose Mofford Park. And Daring Adventures brought sled hockey to the, to the Valley of the Sun. And in fact, the Coyotes Adaptive Sled Hockey Team was birthed from the Daring Adventures program, and they compete nationwide and worldwide. And when it gets too hot in the valley, we head up to camping, and our favorite spot is camping at Camp Colley. And when it snows up north, we offer adaptive cross-country skiing. And one of my favorite partnerships with the city is being involved in the Phoenix Summit Challenge. We head up the all-access portion, and our numbers continue to grow. It's just really thrilling to be able to compete along with everybody else. And some of our flagship programs are based around whitewater rafting, and the River Rampage trip is geared towards youth with disabilities and youth at risk, ages 14 to 20. We take them on the San Juan River away from their four walls, and it's really just a life-changing activity. And here's a group, picture of a group that went hiking up to the river house on the San Juan River. And then, for adults, we offer whitewater rafting on the Colorado River through the Grand Canyon, and having been a participant, this is just so exhilarating and life-changing. And this is a picture of one of our adaptive equipment, and what this is called is a safari chair, which allows participants the ability to experience hiking in places that they could only dream of going. And I'm happy to talk about a new program that started last year. It's the Healthy Day Recreation. It really is a recreation for group activities. It's just another way to offer another thing for them to do, get out in cycle. And also, we have some great collaborations with other Phoenix groups such as Ability 360, Arizona Spinal Cord Association, and Barrows. And some of our significant accomplishments is the implementation of the Healthy Day Recreation program. We also became a licensed vendor through the DDD and offer respite and rehabilitation programs. And also, last year, we qualified as a charitable tax credit program, and last year, we served almost 2,000 people, with 41% of those being new participants. And looking forward, we're looking very forward to having the Healthy Day program being launched out of Telephone Pioneer Park. Also, we have implementation of a new respite and rehabilitation program, and we've also started a community outreach called, a virtual tour called Discover Daring Adventures. And at your desk, you have a brochure, and I encourage you to spread the word about anybody in your district who would like to learn more about Daring Adventures. It's just a one-hour get-to-know-us program. And I am just thrilled to let you know that last week, we were awarded by the Phoenix Chamber of Commerce, the Impactful Award for our nonprofit. And I just wanted to quick show you a video of what we're all about, but in conclusion, we're just so thrilled to be partnering with the city of Phoenix to offer this great outdoor recreation for those with disabilities.
Life is either a daring adventure or nothing.
The beauty of Daring Adventures is we provide outdoor recreational activities for individuals with disabilities and other life challenges.
We're all about the power of the outdoors. You know, our mission statement is improving the lives of people with disabilities and significant life challenges through the power of the outdoors.
Daring Adventures is that reminder that all of us have a full right to be participants in life's adventures. Daring Adventures is that reminder that all of us have a full right to be participants in life's adventures. Thank you so much for your time today. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much, Nancy, and Jerry, Cynthia, and the whole team. What a great, inspiring presentation. We need that right before our budget discussion in particular. Vice Mayor, you asked for this item to be on our agenda, please.
I did. I was around when it first started and known about it. And then it just kind of quietly disappeared off everybody's radar. And then when you came to me and said, "Oh, we need to get back to Pioneer Park," and Inger was willing and Cynthia were willing to work something out. I have been there when the people were getting ready to go on one of these trips. And if you could see their faces and their enthusiasm and the potential thrill. And then I've also been there when they return, and they are on a high like no other. I mean, smiles wrap all the way around. They are so proud of themselves on what they accomplished and how they did it. And I just want to thank you all. I mean, this is a service that most people don't even know exists. But you have made it one of the finest programs in the United States, probably in the world. And I think it started here and it's continuing here. I'm so proud to have you here today and to recognize you because you are exceptional. So thank you for what you do, staff. Thank you for working out a way that they can work at Telephone Pioneer Park. Because I would guess most people don't even know that park is specifically designed for people with disabilities. And it's the only one, I think, in the City of Phoenix like that. So by sharing it accomplishes so much for so many in need, so thank you all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Leonard Clark, did you want to provide testimony on this item? Is Mr. Clark here?
Mayor, I thought that I'd put in for item number one, so maybe when the budget starts, I could speak on that, if that's all right.
That's perfectly fine. Thank you so much. Other members of the council, comments on this item? Councilwoman?
I want to thank the Vice Mayor for bringing this forward. It really is a fabulous program, and thank you for sharing the information with us. And I hope it's part of our brand here at the City of Phoenix. Under particularly Mayor Stanton's leadership, we've gotten some great recognition as one of the most friendly communities in the country for people with disabilities, sometimes ranked number one, which is not to say that we don't still have a lot of work to do. But I think it is part of our brand, whether it be making sure that Sky Harbor is welcoming to people with disabilities or every time we have a Heritage Fund grant, we seem to try to make sure our parks are more accessible. It's really neat to see that commitment across the city. So congratulations to the Parks Department, to the Vice Mayor, and to Mayor Stanton for your leadership.
All right, thank you very much. That's very nice. Councilwoman Stark, please.
Yes, thank you. I had the opportunity to meet with Jerry, and the enthusiasm when I met with him, it just spills over. And I do know where the park is. It's right across from my district. And it's just exciting to see you partner with the city. I appreciate everything you guys do. It was a wonderful presentation.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman?
So thank you for what you do. You make an impact on the community, especially a community that at times feel isolated. What I like to say, what I enjoy about it, is that water and anybody that's around water, that can be, it's a sense of calming, but when you're in water, it makes you feel like you're a part of something. And it makes you feel like you're alive, and at that moment, I'm sure it makes them feel like they're the equal with everybody else in the world. And so that's what I enjoy about Daring Adventures because they are centered around water and able to then have the same thrills and same feelings and same emotions as everyone else at that moment in time. And so they can always remember that memory and go back and say, "At this moment, that's what that made me feel, so let me still have hope and keep moving on with my faith." So thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments by members of the council about this awesome program? Councilwoman Gonzalez, please.
I just want to say thank you and thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing this light. There are a lot of people don't realize that this is an option, and it's important to let people know that it is, but also, I'm sure, to let people know that they can also get involved, right? And help benefit this program and help it grow. So thanks for your commitment, and it's just, it's very exciting. Thank you.
And we invite you all to come out and have some fun with us.
It'd be honored.
Thank you so very much. Be careful what you offer, though. In the early days of the program, a city council member did go rafting. And since then, no elected official's been invited back because it held up the group so much. It slowed everybody down. So Tom Milton, if you're watching, you've changed history as a result. Anyway, it's a great, great program. We're so glad you're committed to it. Thank you for doing it. And Inger, your team, thank you so much. Great to see the pictures and remind us about Camp Colley as well, so we appreciate that. All right, next item on the agenda is our discussion of the 2018-19 City Manager's Proposed Budget. To quickly remind people how our budget process works here at the city, which is a little bit different than how it works, as we saw last week down at the state legislature. People actually get to look at our budget for weeks on end and provide substantive input at, I think, 15 or 16 budget hearings that our city holds throughout the city every year, based upon the input from those budget hearings, both people who personally testified, as well as emails and calls and messages that we receive from the public. The city manager will then revise his proposed budget, and then ultimately, the city council will vote on it. Today is the day that the city manager will reveal his new proposed budget, based upon the input that he's heard from the public. And then, of course, this city council will be voting on this item in two weeks. Is that correct? So that will be our budget vote. Today is not an action item, so today is an opportunity for us to receive this information, ask any questions that we may have of our city manager for his new proposed budget. So with that, Mr. City Manager and our Budget Director, Jeff Barton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. As you said, that previous item does put into perspective the budget because I know I get absorbed in the budget as numbers and write-ups, and it really is about programs that affect people's everyday lives and why people want to live in Phoenix. And the important things about being here are things like Daring Adventures and Parks and these things. So that's a great lead-in. I wish I could say that I planned it that way, but I'll give that to the Vice Mayor and the Mayor. Thank you again for the time on the proposed budget for 2018-19. I want to thank you all for hosting the budget hearings and soliciting input on a broad range of topics during those hearings in April. And I want to thank all the city employees who attended each one of the hearings and responded immediately to many of the concerns that were raised. As you recall, one year ago, we were concerned that the budget we would present today would be a deficit budget. But instead, after a year's worth of diligent effort led by you, the city council, and carried out by our city employees, we have a budget that actually provides a small surplus to do some things. Strong revenue, diversified economy, smart pension management, and cost controls have put us in this positive position that we'll describe. The budget preserves our existing services, and we heard over and over that the community says they value those services. It provides increased funding for technology replacements, vehicle replacements, and building maintenance. It restores employee compensation in the final year of our labor contract. It's a restoration that brings our employee compensation back to where it was before the Great Recession 10 years ago. It restores important services like libraries and parks and public safety, continues the aggressive hiring of police officers and firefighters. It includes the creation that you took action on for a public safety pension stabilization fund that will have about $25 million to allow us to deal with any future fluctuations in public safety pension funding requirements. And it allows us to decrease our property tax rate by two cents from 2.16 to 2.14. As detailed in the written report attached to your packet and discussed exhaustively at community budget hearings, the trial budget, which was presented in March and commented upon in April, added about $3 million in general fund services, as shown up here. Police investigations, fire inspections, sober living home regulations to protect neighborhoods, park rangers, call center staff, and outreach and navigation teams to address homelessness, more trees and shade, restored art grants, the advancement of a Latino cultural center with a staff person to work on that full-time, restored Sunday library hours, and Census 2020 outreach. In non-general funds, the budget adds to our planning and development team to streamline development, respond to community growth, better assist planning and communication with residents, and has significant additions to our transportation through the Streets Department, our engineering team that will support increased pavement restoration, sidewalk traffic management, ADA and mobility improvements funded by Transportation 2050. The proposed budget, as you said, flows out of the work we all did in the month of April to put a trial budget on the table for the community to review. Over the course of 15 meetings throughout the city, on email and on social media, over 400 comments were received. And as you have noted, input leads to some changes in our budget. Public comment covered a lot of ground, some of which we can address in the budget, some of which requires ongoing dialogue by the council. We heard people asking to preserve the existing services that they value and requested increased funding for homelessness and community cleanups as a result of encampments. Arts funding and arts maintenance funding, access to the library and expanding hours and service, hiring more police and more fire to increase public safety, focusing on street maintenance. The condition of our streets was significantly discussed. And the condition of our parks, safety for pedestrians and shade in our heat, youth programs, community services. And there was comment about a legal defense fund and a compensation fund for victims of police action. So as you'll see from Jeff in a minute, some of these we were able to address in the budget through reallocating some resources. Some of these, though, really are going to require policy conversation before a budget can really deal with them. And I just discussed a couple of those more fully. First was homelessness. I think it was probably the number-one topic of discussion, or at least among the top three discussed items across the city. A great deal of conversation about neighborhood and personal cost of transient and homeless conditions and the need for serious regional conversation about sharing the impacts of homelessness equally, or at least more equally, across jurisdictions in Maricopa County and across neighborhoods across the city. And continuing to refine our service model as well. There was a desire for more public safety hiring beyond our existing plans, which Jeff will talk about. The desire for school resource officers in some schools, particularly in Awatuki, that are going to lose their SROs because their district has lost state funding. So schools have to bring resources to the table for school resource officers. Sometimes, schools get that from state grants. When those go away, school districts have to find that funding to be able to maintain school resource officers. And so that was a discussion in Awatuki particularly. Even more library hours. There's a significant call for opening every library every day. While this budget doesn't do that, it does advance us on that path. There are still four libraries after this budget that won't be open on Sundays, and clearly, that's something we need to focus on in future budgets. And finally, the legal defense and compensation funds were discussed by a significant number of people in some of the budget hearings. We did a little bit of research on that. It's outlined in my letter. In terms of a compensation fund for victims of police action, there are pathways for that through our risk management, but we didn't find an example of a specific one of those in any other city in the United States in our research. In terms of legal defense fund for families affected by deportation actions by the federal government, there are some cities that have set up funds like that. Ours has not. This budget does not add money to do that. I really think that's something the council would need to discuss in greater detail if we were going to add something like that, too. But there are examples of other cities that have done that. So with that, I will turn it over to Jeff Barton, our Budget and Research Director, who, along with his staff, has done a great job of putting all this together and talk about some of the adjustments we were able to make. We don't have new general fund resources. Our revenue projections were accurate, but we did reshift some things to deal with priorities. And then we have one significant addition dealing with the solid waste fund we would like to talk about. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff for the detail.
Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon, and thank you for this time. Again, continuing the theme that we heard at the community budget hearings and something that we hear from you routinely, public safety is a priority. It's a priority for the City of Phoenix, and it's a priority for our neighborhoods. With that vein, first thing that we're changing from the proposed budget is Fire Station 55. That fire station is eventually to be located outside of I-17 and Joe Max Road. It's currently being served by a part-time fire station operating out of an extended stay, and it's working 12 hours a day. This budget expands that and converts that temporary fire station to a 24-hour operation seven days a week. This will improve the response times and provide the opportunity for fire to deal with that expanded growth and need up in that area, the Nortera area. We're adding 14 firefighter positions to do this, and we're able to do this by working very closely with the fire chief. We're doing this with no additional resources. We're doing this all within the fire department budget by reducing overtime and some other miscellaneous expenses. And so fire can start hiring those positions as soon as possible. Also, in public safety, City Manager mentioned, we've been aggressively hiring police officers. This budget continues that aggressive hiring, and I'll walk you through what that means right now. So again, our roadmap, what we've been talking about for police, is trying to get to that 3,125 number of sworn officers on the street. That number is based on what we have available from a resource standpoint. Any additional positions beyond that would require either an investment in additional resources or just other funding sources. So currently, the department has about 2,948 positions filled. That includes folks in the academy, recruits in the academy. The plan next year is to hire as many as 300, possibly even more. That accounts for what we know as far as our attrition. Any additional positions that leave the department above and beyond our estimation will also be available for the police department to fill. So at a minimum, we'll be hiring as many as 300 officers next fiscal year for a net increase of where we currently stand of about 180 filled positions on the street. On the fire side, with the approval of this budget and those 14 positions that we talked about for Station 55, their sustainable number will be 1,668 for the foreseeable future, especially as we have that 2016 Safer Grant. So they're currently sitting at about 1,653 filled positions. So next year, we're anticipating that we'll fill 84 additional firefighter positions, and that also accounts for known attrition. Any positions that they leave beyond that, those calculations, will also be available to the fire department. And for anybody watching from home, you can see the links below if you're interested in a career in either police or fire. Arts and culture, as the city manager mentioned and as you heard throughout our budget hearings, the 15 hearings that we had, people value the art. They value the arts programs and they value the public art. And there was a consensus out there, and there was a lot of demand out there for increasing arts maintenance. This budget proposes that we increase our arts maintenance funding to $100,000. That will enable staff to make sure that we provide proper maintenance to our public art, to make sure that it's around for many, many years in the future. We're able to do this also at no additional cost because we're taking part of our general fund facilities' management funds and pointing them directly at the arts maintenance budget. So again, no cost increase to the general fund. Our next area that we heard a lot about, I saw a lot of families come out talking about pedestrian safety. I love seeing children out there participating in the public process. It's really encouraging to see our young folks get active. So this budget proposes that we establish an Office of Pedestrian Safety. We're going to do that by adding one position that will serve as the pedestrian safety coordinator. That position will work very closely with the Pedestrian Fatality Review Team, and they will be tasked with conducting studies and implementing the four Es, as the city manager likes to call it, education, evaluation, engineering, and enforcement strategies to improve pedestrian safety in Phoenix. And finally, homelessness. I think homelessness was the thing that we heard most about at all of our budget hearings, no matter what part of the city you were in. And so what we're proposing here is a one-year pilot that will actually add full-time cleanup staffing to assist the Phoenix Cares Program in delivering their mission. This will add two cleanup crews, one to Public Works Solid Waste and one to the Street Transportation Department. The Public Works Crew is currently operating on basically two days a week, and the Streets Crew is currently doing one day a week. This budget will give them the resources they need to do that five days a week and provide for neighborhood alley and wash cleanups. One thing we have to emphasize that this is a one-year pilot using the existing solid waste fund balance. So what's being discussed now are some service-level metrics. So we'll be evaluating this program as the year goes on, and we'll determine whether or not this program warrants continued. If it does continue, we'll have to either incorporate it into the eventual solid waste rate or we'll have to find additional resources to pay for this program. increase, or rate, or we'll have to find additional resources to pay for this program. And then finally, just kind of now that all the dust is settling, and we're finally done analyzing and picking at people's budgets, just to give you an overall comparison, next year's budget at about one point three billion dollars is about thirty-two million dollars more than the current year budget, and that is largely, what's accounting for that is the one point three percent employee restoration that the city manager mentioned, that's about fourteen million dollars. Also, a conscious decision to increase our funding for vehicle replacements, fleet and maintenance, that's also about fourteen million dollars. And we also are growing our contingency by two million dollars. As our budget grows, we're making the responsible decision to grow our contingency, and that keeps us at about four percent. And then finally, also the two thousand and sixteen Fire Safer Grant match is what also accounts for that increase. So again, a lot of our budget, conscious increases, nothing that we don't have control over. Our next steps, so today, we're here with the proposed budget, as many of you referenced, and as the city manager mentioned, we come back in two weeks for your first action on that budget, and then in June, we come back for our legal and formal budget adoption process that's required by both state statute and legal charter. And then finally, July fifth, we'll be back with our property tax adoption process. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So moving in the future, we're going to continue to keep a close eye on results of pension reform, ways to restore more services in parks, libraries, public safety, watching our compensation to make sure we're competitive in hiring. We have to continue to monitor our spending, keep our services, service level as high as we can within the taxes and resources we have, and so that's our focus. We're happy to answer any questions and as we go forward.
All right, thank you very much. The previous slide showed that our revenues matches our expenditures both for last year and this year, although maybe a little confusing to folks, because some of those expenditures is putting in an account to save it for future contingency. Tell us just a little bit more about the contingency fund. It's a very, very important thing that the city does, a very fiscally responsible thing that the city does, to have the highest, I think it would be a record in terms of our contingency funding, both in raw numbers and a percentage, I think, if not close, but it's very important as credit ratings, you look at the city of Phoenix, that we are budgeting very responsibly. So again, it shows as an expenditure, but actually, it's an expenditure into a savings account.
That is correct. So Mayor, to your point, the budget for next fiscal year includes our contingency fund, which many agencies or entities call a rainy day fund. So for us, that fund, this council elected several years ago to responsibly grow that contingency, trying to get to five percent. So, right now, we're at about fifty million dollars, a little over fifty, almost fifty-two million dollars in next year's budget, and that's almost double what it was when this council made the decision to grow that contingency fund. So it does provide us the resources, if we were to see a dip in the economy, it allows us the flexibility of being able to save off that downturn.
Okay, thank you very much. It has been a policy of this council for years now, and we've shown a lot of fiscal discipline to maintain the growth of the contingency fund. I have a series of cards here from citizens that want to provide testimony, I think the best thing to do is to hear from those folks, and then I'll hand it over to the council for any comments that they have, unless someone has a question at this time as to the information that was just provided. Okay. How about Leonard Clark? You had something on item one, and then now also item number three. I did have a card for you, but it was marked two, but I think that was an accident.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, you walked on number one.
And I do apologize, I thought I marked on number one. So you got me this time, you were right.
For once, for once.
All right, this one time. Well anyways, just really quickly, because you've already talked about it, but I'm just concerned about what's going to happen with the dark money bill, because in Tempe, of course, and you know, they're waiting to see what the governor is going to decide and all of these things, so when the people are being told that, you know, the city of Phoenix will hopefully, will be having a chance to vote on, you know, the dark money option so we can know who is bankrolling our candidates at the municipal level. The governor already did one bill, which basically, you know, took away tens of thousands of Tempe voters' right to vote, just took them away. So all these things, it's not so clear, and I know it's very complicated, so that's what I wanted-
I'll give you a short answer on that. I believe litigation is almost inevitable on the issue of consolidated elections that was discussed earlier, and on assuming it passes by the voters, if the voters of Phoenix decide to eliminate dirty, dark money from our city elections, inevitably litigation will result from that.
So, okay, and hopefully, the initiative will go through by Mr. Terry Goddard. Anyways, thank you, Mayor, for letting me talk on that, but I'm here because I got on social media, our good friends, citizens show up at city budget, and I agree with them on some of the things that they're asking. They're asking the city of Phoenix to create a legal defense fund for immigrants pushed to ICE custody by Phoenix PD. Context, Phoenix PD has been separating our families through criminalization and partnership with ICE and MCSO. Two, a compensation fund for the communities impacted by police violence for resources to go to counseling, trauma support, therapy needed after incidents of police violence, redistribution of police funding to the community for neighborhood specialists for direct community programs. Four, increased funding for citizens returning from jail due to Phoenix having the highest recidivism in the country, there's a need for, and that's not, I acknowledge, city of Phoenix, they're coming out of prison, but I'm hoping, and they're hoping that city of Phoenix will provide funding for that. Number five, increase of lighted pedestrian crosswalks, I heard you talking about that earlier, and crosswalk signs in South Phoenix and Maryville, and I would ask for my district too, and district one. Context, Phoenix PD is one of the deadliest police departments in the nation. In two thousand sixteen, they killed eighteen people, one less than LA, a city double our size, there needs to be accountability on the police violence being inflicted in our community and the trauma caused. So I agree with them on their, they're asking you to do these things, and thank you so much, what a great country where I can get up here and speak to such very powerful people.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I don't know if that's an email form, or the person submitting it wants it submitted to the city manager and city council, but if you would, please forward that to us, so we have-
Oh, right, I think they will, thank you so much, Mayor.
Harris Wallace?
Hi.
Good to see you.
I am here, basically, as a participant of the city budget hearings, and I've been to a couple across the valley, and they're great, community-led events, but since that, it's been a month, right? And another life has actually been lost to the police. What I'm noticing is that more families and community members are experiencing this pain and stress and trauma of police violence, and these funds that we're talking about can actually be allocated today while the plans continue to get developed. You're doing it with the alley cleanings, right? There's no policy, but there's allocation for that monies. And what we're looking for is, as a community, for the council, for our council members that we elected, to basically step up and do right by your own process that you have invited us into, right? You've invited us in, and you're asking for our comments, so we're asking for you to do right by us. And, you know, as your constituents, you know, hopefully, we can all work together to make it a lasting partnership as community members here. Thank you.
Thank you much for your testimony, thanks for coming down. Next will be Donna Reiner, great to see you, followed by Craig Trippken. Good to see you.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, Mr. Zucker, Jeff, thank you. I happen to be the Chair of the Friends of Phoenix Public Art, and we want to thank you so much for at least bringing the maintenance fund up to a hundred thousand dollars, and Ms. Pastor, yes, we are working so we don't have to have this conversation every year. In the meantime, it pleases me for the fact that there are thousands of people here from the AAM, the American Association of Museums, who are enjoying a lot of our public art, which happens to be downtown, and I even had one person come in to see the gallery at City Hall. Now that's all I'm going to say about arts, but now that I see that you want to create a position of the Office of Pedestrian Safety, my recommendation, that person must be a pedestrian, not a car driver, a pedestrian, or at least you need to have advisors who are true pedestrians, I'll volunteer myself. Being number one in pedestrian deaths is not something we should be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you very much, your advice is appreciated greatly on that issue. Craig Trippken, followed by Luke Black.
Hi, thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I want to start off by actually complimenting the mayor and the city manager, mayor and council and city manager, because I've watched this process for a long time, and it looked pretty dismal about two years ago for right now, as you know, and so I thank you for doing what you've done and making the hard efforts you've done. I know you care about homelessness, I know that you heard the public on homelessness, and I, at the risk of being a little bit of a broken record, I've got some data for you regarding how important casework is for this. CAS is the largest homeless shelter in the state, and I realize that it's a regional issue, and there has to be some regional leadership that comes about, I hope that MAG will take it up aggressively over the next, sometime in the near future, or the mayors across the valley, because that needs to happen. Our mayor has been great on that, but some of the other mayors have been less enthusiastic about it.
Being very diplomatic.
I'll just say one thing about casework, which is really important. We have four hundred and seventy beds. Last year, four hundred thirteen percent, or forty-three percent of the people that were actively case managed, exited permanent housing. Seventy-four percent of the people that were case managed, this is case managed, we don't get to everybody with case management, seventy-four percent went to known destinations, and if somebody's leaving for the street, that's not a known destination typically, they just don't come back. That's compared to people who don't get casework, which those numbers are eight percent and thirteen percent respectively. So we go from forty-three percent to eight percent with effective case management. That's going to open up beds if we do that, people are going to get out of the shelter quicker, it's going to open up beds, it's going to open up beds, and I, you know, with the outreach program, we need to have beds, and we also need to clean up the immediate area where, around the campus. If I'm living at Thirty-first and Peoria, as uncomfortable as my conditions may be, I still don't want to go down there in many, many cases, so we need to clean up the campus area, we need to make people, make it a comfortable area for where people might want to be, and that means making beds available. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Trippken, great to see you. I appreciate the words you said at the beginning about our budgeting process. We do not have a perfect budgeting process here at the city of Phoenix. It's just better than any other public budgeting process that I am aware of in terms of how open and transparent it is. Sometimes it gets difficult, because it's tough testimony on all different sides with finite resources, but at least it's done out in the open. How about Luke Black?
Just going to talk really quickly in favor of the compensation fund for communities that experience police violence, and in favor of the legal defense fund for individuals who are pushed into ICE custody because of police action. I am in favor of both of these, and I recommend that the city immediately include these in the budget. You are already setting a precedent in this budget, including things that are policy-related with, that you are not sure that you will be able to fund long-term, nor you are sure of their impact, that being the pedestrian study and the solid waste study. We recommend, or I recommend that you include funding for this, and we will figure out the policy as we move forward. This is something that is important, and it cannot wait. It has become increasingly clear that this council does not have the stomach to tackle police violence. You have shown that with your disregard for constituent comments regarding chemical weapons and the ongoing amount of police violence that happens in almost all of the districts that are represented here today. This, because you will not work to end police violence, you have a responsibility to the people that are in your districts to care for their well-being after they are targets of police violence. I would point out that Councilwoman Williams, two people have been killed by police in your district this year. Councilwoman Pastor, four in yours. Councilwoman Gallego, two have been killed by police in your district. Councilman Valenzuela, one in yours, and for Councilman Nowakowski, who is not here, three people have been killed in his district by police. If you-
I'm actually listening to you right now.
Thank you. If you are not going to step up and hold the police accountable, you have a responsibility to care for the wellness of those that are impacted by their violence, and for that, we would ask that you immediately include money in this budget for that compensation fund and for the legal defense fund. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Jennifer Hernandez? And then followed by Kate Tutuya?
So we participated in six budget hearings, we heard zero comments about art maintenance, yet there is a hundred thousand dollars for art maintenance, when we clearly continuously heard money for art programs for youth. And why, why is it that, why, how many people actually made these demands? And why are their voices more important than the hundred fifty-eight people of color who made demands for a compensation trauma fund and a legal defense fund? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Kate Tutuya, I hope I pronounced that correctly, followed by Maria Sanchez.
Hi, good afternoon. It's Tutuya, but whatever. So I'm here in solidarity with my teammates to talk about a really important, two really important demands that the community came out in force at your invitation to express that we needed, and ask why we're at a point now where the proposed budget by Mr. Zucker here and Jeff completely disregards that work. There is no time for political games like this, for pretending that we can table something for excuses like, there is no set model in other states, we can be the first state to do this, why does Phoenix not want to be a leader in this way? I'm sure you know, as my colleagues have said, Phoenix continues to collaborate with ICE, and it continues to be one of the most violent police departments in the country, so the requests, the demands that the community is making of you are not coming out of nowhere, and the disregard maybe that this process has shown for our people really calls into question the accountability of the entire budget process in Phoenix. How is it that you are actually doing good by your constituents, especially when we stand here and you look us in the face and we ask you, like, these are the reasons, this is what we need, you say you need numbers, fine, we'll bring out more than a third of the people who submitted comments to you saying we want these two specific things, and yet, there's no, there's no attempt. You have money to put together committees to study, a hundred thousand dollars to put committees to study, a very important issue, don't get me wrong, like pedestrian instances of violence, but this is not something that you can get creative enough to put time and energy into, so. I really, and I also want to say that, council, this is not something that you need to just accept. I understand that the city manager's office brings you a budget, but this is why we elected you, so that you can be, you can be the power that says, actually, we are not okay with the proposal you've laid before us, and we need to represent the people who got us into these seats. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. In terms of process, you are correct, city manager does make the recommendation, ultimately, the mayor and council does vote on this budget. Maria Sanchez, followed by Ruby Silva?
Hello, my name is Maria, I'm with Center for Neighborhood Leadership, and I'm here to ask why the two demands we asked for are not in the revised budget. We asked for legal defense funds for immigrants pushed to ICE custody by Phoenix PD, and we asked you for compensation funds for communities impacted by police violence. We participated, we shared our stories and how to relieve that trauma again. Over a hundred people, a hundred and fifty people joined this process. Again, over a hundred and fifty people joined this process. One-third of the participations, participation made these demands, and yet, these demands weren't added to the revised budget. So I'm here to ask you, who is this process really for? If you're not going to listen to us, you're making it clear to those a hundred fifty people that came, their families, and the community is watching, so we want to know who is this process for?
All right, thank you very much. How about Ruby Silva? And then followed by Vidi Hernandez?
Good afternoon. I'm just going to get straight to the point, people are being killed in your districts by the Phoenix Police Department, whose main purpose is to protect. With that, it is the responsibility of the council members to take responsibility and to make a change, to make us more safe. So I am here as a young student who has witnessed many injustices occur, to demand that a compensation trauma fund and a legal defense fund be made. to demand that a compensation trauma fund and a legal defense fund be made. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Ms. Hernandez?
All right, good afternoon. This process, one, is really sucky, as people have said, right? We had noticed about a week before about these meetings, or maybe a few weeks before about these meetings. We crammed seventeen budget hearings in fifteen days. The last day, I think we were three at the same time. We participated in six of these budget hearings with very limited time, right? With very limited efforts from the city to actually let community know that this was happening, right? We were out there knocking on doors, letting people know that they needed to go, that needed to show up, or that they could submit a comment, all really fast. Down this next step, it's at 2:30. People are picking up kids, right? Students are coming after school right now. Next process will be at 2:30 as well, and then the next meeting will be as well, right? So, this process is very inaccessible for community, and there is a question around what is this process really for and who is this really for? Over a third of the community has stated, participated, and said that these two defense funds, one, I mean, sorry, a legal defense fund and a compensation fund for trauma due to the police violence that's been inflicted and due to the police collaboration were priority. And we're saying that we need to continue to discuss. While we see in your proposed budget and in the additional documents that you received in the agenda, that there are a lot of things that don't have a plan yet. There's a handful of things that are new. There's a handful of things that are pilot. There's a handful of things that don't have sustained funding for the remaining of the years. So, what that tells me is that we can move forward with both of these funds and continue to figure it out. That we don't need to table any process, that the funds can be allocated today while these things get figured out, such as like many other things in this budget process. These two demands came out of the continuously repeated choices from our leadership here to not address the underlying issues and the underlying solutions. The collaboration with, between police and ICE that continues, the lack of accountability to police violence. And so, this is the least, the least that people can do. We should be having a conversation around how do we increase police accountability, and what does it look like for people to not be deported by the Phoenix Police Department? Instead, we're here with much, very necessary need, that is saying, when you are killing us, please help us get into counseling. When you are separating our families, please give us a hope of legal defense, like other cities have done, to be able to address this. This is ridiculous that we're still having this conversation. Follow your process and listen to a third of the community that spoke. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that testimony. Is any other citizen here wishing to speak on the proposed city manager budget to the city council? Our city council will be voting on this budget in a two-week period on the alternative members of the council. Any questions or comments from the council at this time as to what was presented? Councilwoman, please.
I have some questions regarding the budget. There are some items in here, I think in the original budget, trial budget, that weren't spoken about at the community forums, and have some big dollars attached to those items. I would like, possibly, I would like the city manager to relook at it and look at some of the issues that we're going to have in the future when a shelter or beds close down in September and not have any additional beds. So, I'll be clear, since I always have to, I've now noticed I have to be very direct on what I like to see. And so, I would like to look at providing more money, more funding to CAS, and looking at a formula on that. Secondly, there is, there's money all over this budget. And I haven't had the chance to add it all up as I was looking at it. Regarding Phoenix cares throughout this whole budget. It's in the parks, it's in, I think in the human services, it's in the solid waste. It's all over this budget. And that's why I am solidly pushing for more funding in CAS, because it all goes hand in hand and works together. In the human services, neighborhood services, it says that they're adding 472,000. Is it additional dollars? I guess where I'm trying to understand, is it going to community bridges? Or are we going to open up another RFP for other entities to also assist in this area? So, that's one item. There's another one. When it comes to the trauma and legal defense fund, I'm just curious as to how, it sounded like this happens in other cities. And I am just talking in general, across the board, just, just trauma. When someone witnesses, and also, it's the same thing for police, when someone's in a situation that is high impact and high intensity, and at that moment, items are happening, situations are happening. People are standing there, watching all it unveil and unfold. Trauma is happening at that moment. Any psychologist, any counselor will tell you that. The trauma is happening on our streets. For me, it's a matter of how do we protect our whole city? And how do we also provide resources and services to those that are impacted by trauma across the board in that situation? So, those are some of my thoughts. I would like to, for you to relook at some of the areas where money is allocated, to really think that, do we need that this year, and is it possible to go into the next year's budget? Some items weren't spoken about at any of the community meetings. I just, I just think we really have to think it innovative and out of the box. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor?
Is that Councilwoman?
No, the council-
Nowakowski, please.
I agree with the last portion of Councilmember Pastor. Is there, have we looked into that legal defense fund? Or how we create a legal defense fund, or what it would take to create one? And basically, sit down with some of the community members to try to figure out what would be best for the City of Phoenix if we did create a legal defense fund?
I don't think we can answer that question in terms of what research has been done up to this point.
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski. So, we did some very high-level research, and there are cities that do have legal defense funds. I don't know that we've studied them in depth. The point that I made in my letter and responding to questions is, setting up a legal defense fund is something that needs to be, as Councilman Nowakowski said, be done in collaboration with folks. It needs to have the consensus of the council for us to do that. It's a new program. Many of the programs in the budget, the cleanups, for example, or the arts maintenance are existing programs that we're adding more money to. My point is simply that if the council does want us to pursue, for example, a legal defense fund, I would suggest that that should have a conversation through the Public Safety Subcommittee and the full council about what that looks like, what funding level the council would like us to pursue, that we could develop different options for that. But absent that, I wouldn't recommend taking money from other programs that are currently going in order to do that. But the budget doesn't mean that we can't have the conversation about what does that look like and how is it structured?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Now, to more council members, any additional comments or questions? Councilman, please.
I want to respond to that, only because there are items in this budget that are new. And and that don't exist. And so, I guess I understand, you know, I understand the complexity of the whole process. But I'm just going to throw us back to when I entered office. And when there was a committee formed, and it was called the CPTI Committee. And there were several, well, many, recommendations regarding CPTI. And for whatever reason, there are four recommendations that we have not moved forward on, or at least have a dialogue regarding those items. And I think what the community is saying, and what I'm hearing from the community, is that you're not listening. You're not hearing us. And this has, for me, this has nothing to do with us versus them or anything like this. This has to, how does a community come together in a very holistic way with our police and community and solve a problem that is happening within our areas? And what does that dialogue look like? And really, who's going to be there to facilitate that dialogue and has the expertise to facilitate it? So, I don't think the community has gone away since we've kind of ignored those points. I think that right now, what's happening is you're going to see a rise of the community. And so, I'd rather be proactive as a collective body and get in the, get with the groups and start working. So, I don't know where that begins or starts, but it does start with allocation and budget. And like stated, I think it's very important because we have seen, you've seen the fatalities in District Four. Not only does District Four have the highest fatalities, but they have the highest fatalities in pedestrian-friendly areas and bicyclists. So, there is a money allocated for pedestrian. I can't even find it right now. So, I think probably we need to look at allocating money on how do we have community dialogue, proper, or rich, enriched dialogue with our communities and police. So, I don't know. This is just me off the raw of meetings after meetings after meetings, hearing the voices. And trying to be sensitive on all parts and trying to be proactive to come up with solutions. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I just covered a lot of territory. I'll leave it obviously up, the Community Police Trust Initiative has appeared before the Public Safety Subcommittee on, I think, multiple occasions. Obviously, the chair wants to have that again before a subcommittee for a full vetting, any additional recommendations, council. That'll be up to the, at least, as long as I'm mayor, that would be up to the chair of the Public Safety Subcommittee if he wants to, if he wants to do that. Other comments? Councilwoman, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to our budget team for your hard work on this and all the nights you've put in, as well as months and months to prepare. We share a lot of data with our community, and as the mayor alluded to, it's a much more open process than many peer institutions and other institutions in the state of Arizona. This budget says that safety is a huge priority for us and that we need to think long-term. The investments we're making in stabilizing our pension are very important. We have to be physically responsible, meet our commitments to our existing employees, but also look to the future. I want to thank you for the additional investments in supporting neighborhoods impacted by homelessness. As I talked about at our last budget hearing, that was a priority for me, whether it be in person, out in the community, in my office, at budget hearings. We did hear a lot of feedback from the community that we need to provide more services to end homelessness. But while we're developing those services, we also need to look and partner with our neighborhoods. So, thank you for finding a creative way to do that, that is cognizant that we don't have a lot of general fund dollars, but we'll also provide services. I represent many people who are very significantly impacted. And I think it's important that the public know that this is not the only thing we're doing next, this month at the Housing Subcommittee. We're also going to be looking to allocate new vouchers to provide housing for vulnerable populations, including people experiencing chronic homelessness, as well as people who have severe mental illness. So, we will continue to work outside the budget on these very, very important issues. We're also working to make sure that we talk to the state, and I was just meeting with the business community this morning, about mental health funding. We are not the branch of government that traditionally works on mental health, but we know there's a huge problem, not just in our community, but throughout the United States. But we've had deeper cuts than most, and it seems like there's new interest among our partners, including in the business community, at going to other levels of government and continuing to provide the support. Right now, it feels like the police are the mental health responders, and that's not right for anyone. So, we really need to continue to make sure that people with the right training are out and responding, and we can find the best possible solutions. As we talk about issues related to immigration, I think one good model that we had was when we had DACA renewals. And there were several people on this body for whom that was a very important issue, that we wanted to make sure that the great individuals who are working in our community, thanks to DACA, got to continue to contribute. But we mostly worked by directing funds to nonprofits who were closer to the ground and who could do the work. And frankly, we are in a situation where maybe people on this city council don't necessarily share a view on immigration with people at the state legislature, and that government leading isn't the best way to get done, but really getting resources to the nonprofits who know. So, I think that's something we should continue to look at. And then I have a tradition at these budgets meetings. Every year, I talk about the police precincts, and so I don't want to skip that this year. I represent part of the Estrella, the former Estrella precinct, now the Maryville Estrella precinct. It is larger than the City of San Francisco. We still want to have the same service levels throughout our community. And so, it continues to be a priority for me to look at our police precincts and make sure that everyone gets services regardless of where you live in the City of Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments by members of this council? Councilwoman, please.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out. I had an opportunity to attend five of the fifteen budget hearings, and a couple of them with my colleagues. And I really appreciated that. In fact, four of them, all but one. There was one that we had V. Depoz, and I believe the city manager was there for that one. And one with Councilwoman Pastor and Nowakowski. And had one with Deborah Stark, had one with Elder Williams. So, more than 400 people came out in person or online. And the top priorities, what I heard, public safety, including this, the discussion of the fund, the arts, libraries, streets, homelessness. And, and, and so, you know, it was, it was good dialogue. And the process still continues. I mean, the final vote won't be for just a little while, but it's a good idea to continue to get this information out there. I do want to thank city staff for making it to, obviously making it to every one of these meetings. But at every meeting that I attended, and I'm sure it was the same with all the others, there were, you know, I mean, the city manager attended all of these, well, several of them. There were several that were on the same night. But everyone from Ed Zirker to, you know, we had police chiefs and fire chiefs and directors from throughout the entire city, city departments, that really took an interest. And we all, many city employees who also raise their children in our city and who care about libraries and streets and so on. So, it was a good dialogue, good discussion, and I'm looking forward to seeing, continuing to shape the whole this budget as we move forward.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Stark, please.
Mayor, this is probably more of a question, but with regards to homelessness, you talk about having a regional conversation- about having a regional conversation. How do we engage the other cities in that conversation? I know, I know Mesa has a shelter, but, I mean, it's not just a Phoenix problem, it's not even a Maricopa County problem, and it's, it's a national problem. But how, how can we bring these other cities to the conversation? Because I think they should help with the funding. I just don't know if we have--
All right, before I ask the city manager, maybe I'll ask Councilman Craig Trippin. Maybe you have some thoughts on that issue. We've talked about this for years. We've had discussions at the continuum of care. We've had discussions since I've been head of the MAGA Regional Council, at the regional council level. Other than asking as strongly as we can, what other mechanisms do we have to get other cities to participate at the level that they, that they should? And noting that some are better than others, frankly, including Mesa and Tempe, they seem to be better, but some of the other cities, how do we get them to participate more actively in helping to end homelessness in our region?
Thank you for asking. You're not asking me to talk about caseworkers again, are you? No.
No.
Is it a rhetorical question?
I'm sorry, I couldn't help myself. You know, I think, I think it starts, Mayor, you've shown a lot of leadership in this and, and I thank you for that. And I think in the end, homelessness is gonna run us over if we don't get ahead of this curve. And I think that that's gotta start, it's gotta start regionally and it's gotta be a conversation that occurs at the state. I think MAG should get aggressively involved in this and, and I don't think the continuum of care is right now the place to do it, because I don't, I don't want to pick on the job they're doing, but they've got a huge job. They're mostly trying to deal with compliance with HUD in terms of so much of what they do and then distributing out HUD money. So I think, I think, I think all the mayors need to understand that this is a priority. I think the mayor of Phoenix is gonna be a vital part of that. And then frankly, I think hopefully sooner or later, the league picks it up and carries it to the state. There are 91 communities in this, in this state that, that should be involved. If we, the business community, the economic development people, the realtors, the home builders, all those people should be talking to the state, not just individuals here and individuals there, but, but this is, this is an issue that is critical to the vibrancy of our state and our city. And, and I think the governor needs to understand that, the legislature needs to understand that. I think by and large, MAG and the league are gonna be the places that that comes from and/or all the mayors sitting down together, but I know how difficult that can be. That's my overly long answer.
All right, thank you for jumping in, jumping on that. Part of the issue, of course, is that the issue of trying to end homelessness in our region and state is not codified anywhere under state law. It's not in the state constitution, it's not in state ordinance. Whose responsibility is it? As a result, Phoenix, as it so often does, has stepped up to the plate by far more than anyone else, both in terms of dollars in our budget and the percentage of our budget. State of Arizona sadly has one of the lowest participation rates in terms of both the amount of dollars that they put forward and as a relative portion of their budget. Many other cities do make some level of donation to CAS or the homeless campus, but frankly, it's a fraction of what we do here at the city of Phoenix. And then the question is, what exactly are we asking of the other cities? Is it simply more of a financial donation or are we asking them to also have great facilities for people experiencing homelessness like we're, like we have in the city of Phoenix as well? So we have to better define the ask of, we're sharing the, the burden and the benefit, if you will. Is it not just financial? Is it also saying that we should have great facilities like CAS, other places in the, in our region as well? So that may be, that probably is more of a statewide discussion about whose responsibility is it and then how do we appropriately codify that so it's not just City Phoenix? We accept that responsibility, we embrace that responsibility, even though legally it's not required. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and that's what I thought. I think for us, we, we bear the burden for all the surrounding cities. And, and because of that, we sometimes fall short on other programs that we should be providing to our residents and our businesses. And so I guess I just brought up the question more, that other cities and towns within the area start thinking about this, that it's a responsibility of us all. And I think we do a great job as a city, but I think we need help from our surrounding communities and the county as well. So I guess I just put it out there because I struggle to find other ways to spend money. We just don't have that ability because we have to take care of the homeless population. It's a, it's a moral responsibility to me that we do it.
Thank you. All right, any additional comments or questions on the budget? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I felt a tinge of optimism this morning when I was reading the MAG report and they had done the count on homeless. And it appeared to me, they seemed surprised on the increase in numbers and began to talk about how they needed more facilities and that it was a county-wide problem, it wasn't just Phoenix. And that's the first time I've ever heard that from them. So I'm hoping that everyone else in all the other cities read that report and understand they have a responsibility to step up and it shouldn't be just Phoenix. It should be the county, it should be the state, it should be DOC who drops it off in the city of Phoenix, looking for options, other places, and cooperation so that they don't remain homeless. So I applaud you, Greg, for all your continued effort. I know your case management system is a success and I wish we had more of it and I support that, but I think it's something we all have to continue to work on and recognize what the neighbors and the neighborhoods have already recognized. It's a major problem in the city and police have dealt with this best they can. We now have city staff working with it, but truthfully, it's a drop in the bucket to what the problem is. So it's gonna take a huge collaboration. So thank you for what you're doing and we just have to work on this harder.
Thank you so very much. Any additional comments on the budget, knowing that we're gonna be voting on this and have a more thorough debate in about two weeks' time? In addition, I want to make sure everybody watching at home knows that in addition to personally coming down and testifying, if you have thoughts about the proposed budget, you can contact city management, management or any of us via email or social media or any other ways you would like to contact us, and all of that input does matter. With that, our meeting, I think we have no other business before our city council here today. Our meeting is adjourned.